Okay, we'll call the meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Get out of the roll call, please.
Megan, Brian, Brooks, Rob, Alyssa, Michael, Barb.
Here. Okay, thank you all for being in attendance. Do we have a motion or any changes on the agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
No, second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the agenda. All in favor? Post? Alright. Moving on to the minutes. Anything off in the minutes?
Do we need to consent calendar?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, consent calendar. Thank you. Alright, do the consent calendar first. Okay, let's have a motion for that.
Fast it, I'll motion to approve.
Tote second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor? Post? Okay, now we get to the minutes.
Tote second.
Got a motion, a second to approve the minutes. All in favor? Post? Okay. Public comments, this is time for public comments. If you're here just wanting to talk to the commission about anything, you can come up to the lectern. If you're here for a specific issue, you can wait until we get to that on the agenda. Is anybody here like, would like to address the commission? Okay. Alright, we'll go into new business conditional use application.
So we have received a conditional use permit application for 1216 South Parkview Boulevard. The reason why this is on the agenda is because of Chapter fifteen dash fifteen dash two B eleven. So that says no accessory building shall be erected or located within any front yard. So the building was there, then went away, then now it's back and wants to be bigger. It is in the lot's secondary front yard. So the exception to that says an accessory building may be erected or located within a second front yard on a corner lot. That, this is a corner lot, so long as it's not within the setback. The building, I think, was eleven point one or eleven, a little over eleven feet away from the property line. So that is within the setback of the secondary front yard. So if it's in the setback, you can approve that by conditional use permit. So that is why it's in front of you today. And the applicant is here, I believe, to discuss.
Do you want to come up and maybe we can ask you some questions?
That's fine.
And you have, we have received a fair amount of public comments. They are printed out and in front of you on the paper copies.
Thank you. Jennifer Quincy, twelve sixteen South Parkview Boulevard.
And is this a, you're planning on replacing the shed or have you already replaced it?
There was a lawn shed on, in this exact spot when we purchased the house in two thousand eighteen. We have already replaced it with a new lawn shed that has matching siding, shingles, trim, paint, everything identical to our house.
And then you found out that it needed a conditional use, is that where we're at?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
I did bring photos that show the shed and kind of our yard, if that is helpful.
We do have some pictures in the packet that kind of show, I'm not sure if those are your pictures, but they do kind of on page fourteen and fifteen.
Uh, that is the new shed before it was finished. Okay.
It's a six foot sidewall. Josh.
So, the-
Yeah, what the yard slopes there, so one side's up a little bit.
The way our yard is laid out, we have a very narrow backyard, so there's not really anywhere in the back to put this thing. Um, the south side of our yard houses our swing set, our sandbox. For our family's use, it's the only area that grows any grass. That north side is chronically shaded by the tree, the house, the deck. It's, we even had TruGreen try to grow grass there and they can't even get grass to grow. It's essentially a mud dirt area year round. It works fine for the shed, but it's completely worthless for anything else. I mean, we've, as they mentioned, we've spoken to our neighbors. Everybody has been very supportive in us keeping the shed where it is. They've said it looks nice. Confirmed it doesn't block any traffic views, pose any safety concerns. As I mentioned, it does match the house. It's below the threshold of when we had to make it match our house, but we did it anyway because we want our yard to look nice. We want our neighborhood to look nice. The shed's far enough back from the corner that it doesn't affect traffic views, safety concerns. I know when I spoke with Paul, he had kind of explained that part of the reason of having the setback on the corner lots was so when you sit on the corner and look down the street, everything is kind of in line and stays lined up, looks nice. There's multiple privacy fences, including ours, which was new last summer and approved by the city, that stick out farther than our shed and kind of make that visual theory moot, I guess. You can barely see the shed behind the new fence. Our neighbor to the east, Joe and Edie Sadler, they probably have the best view of the shed, which is hidden behind their pine tree. And they supported it enough that they, there's a letter from them supporting its position.
Yeah, just for those listening, we have, I think, like, six different letters here from neighbors.
And, and- And there's a neighbor here as well that decided to come and support us as well, so.
Um, Paul, does the shed conform to setbacks, height, size?
Height, yes. Setback from the house, yes. And from the other property line, which would be the east property line, yes. Just not the one to the north.
And so what, what's off with that, then?
Well, the site plan shows actually eight, eight feet. Now, you need, you need twenty feet, so.
That's the second frontage side, so it would need a conditional use. You can, we can approve it with conditional use in the second frontage, but that's what, what it's affecting.
My biggest concerns in these types of issues is the height of it. But the fact that it's only six foot, it's no taller than the fence. And so, you know, any visual obstructions to the rest of the neighborhood up and down the street, it's not, in my mind, it's not a, not an eyesore, blocking views up and down the street.
That was one of the reasons I built at that height, so it didn't stick up like a sword on a model fence.
Sure.
I think the only real condition I'd like to add is that the, there would have to remain a privacy fence there in order for the shed to remain there. If the privacy fence were removed, then I would, I guess that'd be my requirement, is that there remains a privacy fence and it stays in the setback.
I'm guessing that's going to stay there because you guys spent a lot of time putting that up.
Yep.
We would really like it too.
I was watching, yeah. Looks, it looks nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if, if there's any other concerns, I would make a motion to approve it with the condition of retaining a privacy fence.
I'd bring all second.
Okay, do we have any more discussion? We appreciate all the letters and support from the neighbors. Let's go ahead and vote then, all in favor? Post? Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you. Okay, Patrick, we have all these discussion items. We're going to limit discussion per-
So, we sure do. So, just in terms of anticipated discussion times, not much has changed with the ADA or merger simultaneously approved lots. Probably our big discussion items are the fences ongoing from a previous meeting. We had the lot down in Aspen Ridge. Kind of that situation. The hard surface definition was brought up by a resident and I tried to include a memo on that, as well as how we apply our minimum parking standards. We do have someone here to speak to that, so that could be a more thorough discussion, as well as the ongoing zoning changes discussions, just kind of our ongoing thing. But the variance appeals process, I've heard some inclination, inclination on your end that you might want to discuss what happens beyond you when it goes to the city council. So, those, the variance appeals, the minimum parking, the hard surface definitions and the multi-frontage lots are probably our, our big things to hit, but we can certainly talk about the others as you would like. I'm just highlighting those because those will probably take the most time and I imagine you all probably don't want to be here till ten thirty.
Okay, anybody have anything on number eight, the ADA accommodations? Or is that look pretty good? That's on page twenty-four.
My concern with that one, I've, you know, expressed it before, is I won't get hung up around the felony thing. On that one, I, I said, you know, someone could have been convicted of a manufactured distribution, you know, when they were in their twenties and now they're sixty. They've done their time. They've, they've outgrown that, but it is what it is. But my concern is the, um, the variance or, or whatever, does that go away when the disability goes away or they move away? Does it stay with the property? We haven't addressed that.
So, the intended language, once it gets in there, is my understanding of how this all works on a federal level is beyond just who pays for it. It's when the disability goes away. It's, it's not a variance, but the variance to our rules goes away as well. And if it's their private thing they put up, then they are responsible for removing that as well. It exists if they exist in that location.
So, if, if the disability goes away, you know, could be a short-term disability, when that goes away or they move away, do they, would they have to remove any, what's the word I'm trying to, improvements? That would normally be out of compliance.
My understanding is yes. And the way, and it helps a little bit on that end that this is a municipal code amendment rather than a zoning amendment, because zoning would treat it then as a non-conforming use and it would just be allowed to exist and that's probably not what we want. Whereas it's, with it being in the municipal code, my understanding is the law is the law. If it remains past that time, then you have a violation. And I have noted those things for future incorporation into a draft.
Got, anything else on that one? Let's go to the number nine, improve lots. Page thirty-eight.
So this dovetails off that to add kind of an exception when, for that. And that's kind of our ongoing discussion on when a merger is required versus not. And last time, I think, we talked about planning and zoning. Your intended implementation of that rule is when something is proposed that implicates both lots, not just if it's one and then they want to work on another lot. Unless it impacts both, the merger is not required. And current, and we'll work on modifying some language and presenting it back that captures that intent.
We got an email this week about a, I believe it was a variance request, either a conditional use variance for Hanson's. And now, that one would be one that we would require them to accommodate.
Correct. So that one, not to get too far in the weeds, so please don't provide commentary because we're not at the public hearing, but the situation there is similar to the lot south of Brandon ninety Plaza. You have a person with a garage in their backyard already wanting to put a driveway to it. So it would be a driveway off a secondary frontage, which would require a conditional use permit. So that's the first one. And then part of it would, to access the garage, would need to be in the rear yard. So that's the second conditional use permit. The variance is because currently the code prohibits a driveway in the rear yard setback. So that's the variance aspect of that.
Yeah, we don't need to, to get in the weeds on that one. I'm just, because it's, it's a second parcel-
The garage is not a principal structure, so it would necessitate having to have the principal structure as the house, so a merger would be required.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of what I think that that would be. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, do we have any more input for Patrick on this one?
So we're really not changing anything? We're just changing, doing some wordsmithing?
Correct. To make the words better match your intent for it. That way it's hopefully clear, should all of us magically be gone in a year, then at least whoever picks it up after us will know where we're going.
Um, we may have a error. Chapter four point nine of the Brandon ordinance. We cannot have a chapter four point nine. It ends at four point eight.
So this one proposes adding a new chapter to chapter four. So it adds a ninth subchapter. Maybe I, I will try to clarify better that it's a subchapter, not a- a broader creation.
Yeah, because right now, four seven is abatement of dangerous buildings for a certificate of occupancy and there is no four nine.
Correct. This would be a, a brand new-
This would have one subject.
Okay.
Yep. Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that one? Alright, let's go to the fence discussion for multiple frontage lots.
So this was a couple of meetings ago, we had the, a resident come in requesting that we somehow change or alter or supplement or add an exception for their situation down in Aspen Ridge. And I will pull up the zoning code or the GIS and bring you back to that law, just to provide the context. The issue there was the addressing of the law and what determined the primary front versus the secondary frontage. So their house is, is here. This hasn't been updated yet, but it kind of sits parallel to, yeah, parallel with where it says Brandon. So it's kind of, so their front yard is down here, so up here connecting with Christianson Park is their second front yard. We limit the height of second front yards to four fences and second front yards to four feet. They, the resident saw that more akin to their backyard and wanted a taller fence. The code currently prevents them from doing so. So they were seeking a solution. I included what the city of Sioux Falls does in the packet. I have admittedly not looked at it recently or since I returned from vacation. But my understanding is that if it's a certain distance from the property line, you're allowed to have a taller fence in the second front. And just, we included it in there in case it sounded like you may have been going in the direction of there's just not much to do here, but I just wanted to bring it back for discussion in case you had more time to think on it and desired to do anything different.
I think with our, with our double frontage, we run into enough situations with fences that I don't know that adding more opportunity for something to happen where a fence could be more of a problem, I guess, than we already have. I could just say, uh, open up an opportunity, more opportunity for something we don't want than the opportunity for something we do want, I guess, is what my concern is with making changes to that.
As I read this, maybe I'm looking at the wrong section, but where I, I'm looking on page forty, it's allowed, I'm looking at one sixty point four eight oh, subparagraph E, on corner lots, it's allowed except if the street, the side street, the secondary, I guess, the secondary yard is not used as a front yard and does not have direct access to the street. So in the, in the instance where we were talking about our ordinance would basically match Sioux Falls, would it not? Because what, weren't they, um, I don't, we don't have the- Wasn't there, wasn't there- Was it to the east or to the south? Was there a front?
Their front door faces west.
And that's where they wanted to put the fence, though.
That's right.
And so our, our ordinance would align with Sioux Falls ordinance, because that's technically their front yard. Their primary front yard. Under E point one, the required front yard of budding and interior or collector's street is not used as the front yard and it does not have direct access into the street. I'm assuming when they mean that, they're talking about the-
It's not used as the front yard. Boy, that's an open statement. You know, it's not used as a front yard. What, what is your interpretation, sir, about if somebody said it is not used as a front yard? I'm just asking for his opinion.
Yeah, to me, that would be the, the house front, the primary front.
So it would be used as the front yard?
Yeah, because that's, that's-
I think it is used as the front yard.
I think the front yard is where the address of the house is, whether you use it as a front yard or not. He was saying that he, that the side where the address is, to him feels like a side yard. But it's not. It's his front yard, even if he feels differently about it. Is this, uh, what we're looking for, what we're looking at on page forty, is this our ordinance or is this the example from Sioux Falls?
This is the example from the city of Sioux Falls.
Okay. I was wondering about him, instead of a fence, would he be allowed to build a hedge?
So-
Or to plant a hedge?
Generally, our definition of fence includes everything designed with a fence-like effect, whether it's natural or not. So if you somehow cobbled a whole bunch of rocks together to make a fence-like effect, it would be a fence.
But we don't control landscaping, trees, bushes. We don't permit, you know, we don't have a permit for it.
So Patrick, you're asking if we want to change it to be more like this example from Sioux Falls or if we want to just leave it the way it is? Is that what you're asking?
I, maybe not so much directly if you want it to be like Sioux Falls. I'm just trying to bring it back in front of you in case you thought there was a solution to be had for this resident that he obviously don't want to write a, a solution for one situation because that impacts the other a thousand of them. But is there something you want to craft in there that would solve his problem that wouldn't tweak too much else?
I guess in my mind, as I, as I stated, I think even if my interpretation of the Sioux Falls ordinance, it wouldn't be allowed there either. Because that west side is the front yard. Now, I think the difficulty in this particular situation is how the public sees the front of a house is different than how internally the front of a house is. You know, how you, how you orient your house, um, you know, where your views are from inside the house may not, the front and back of the house may not align with how the public and everybody else sees your house from the outside. But what we're concerned about is the rest of the world, not the occupants. I should say, we're, we're concerned about both, but we're protecting the rest of the world. We're, we're protecting the public and, and that's how I think we need to look at this. You know, how, how the inside of the house and the rooms are laid out. Yeah, their backyard may be one direction, the front yard another direction, and not the same as how the outside of the house appears. We can't, we can't have any control over that. Are they, on this one, are they wanting to bring, how far do they want to bring that fence down? That, that, all the way to the line in that front of the house or, yeah, front of the house to me, yeah.
Not stop. I believe so.
Not stop at the northwest corner.
Correct.
They want to keep going by.
To be in line with the house, I think it would have had, there was some way it would have jogged over quite a bit. They just wanted it to run parallel to the property lineup, to the park. As if it were a square instead of a angle.
Just to clarify, he would be allowed to put a six foot fence to the back northwest corner, correct? I've, where that deck's at, would that be allowed? I'm just, for clarification. Yeah.
Would he be allowed a fourth foot? Yes. Four foot would be fine.
Right, but in, in his opinion, I don't want to speak for that gentleman, but that was not going to give him the privacy he needed.
He was wanting six foot.
The privacy.
Yeah.
So is there any interest in making changes or leave it as is for now? I appreciate you getting these examples, Patrick. Thank you very much. I'm not hearing, I'm not, not hearing any changes coming forth, so we can put it on the back burner. Is that what we're thinking? Alright, um, it may resurface again. Alright, hard surface definition discussion.
So while I was gone, it sounds like you all had a resident come in wanting to talk about allowing landscape rock and gravel as in our definition of hard surface to allow parking. Currently, hard surface means an impervious surface of a per, a permeable pavement, including asphalt, concrete or landscape pavers. So in order to allow landscape rock or gravel or something else, we would need to amend the code. We just wanted to check in with you to see if there was any appetite on your end for doing so.
Paul, you probably have more experience in this because you see when people try to do things that, so what's the-
Paul, you probably have more experience in this because you see when people try to do things that, so what's the, what would be the advantage, what would be the disadvantage of something other than what we currently allow?
Well, I administer the definition as it states now. I've been here eleven years and so it would, it would have quite a few people wanting to park on gravel or, or, or rock. There probably are currently today, if we drove out there, there would be people on there, so, um, I, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the board and how you, your team wants to, to vote on it, but, um, do you want to speak on vulnerability or?
You want to speak to it?
Uh, yeah, my name's Matt Petty. I brought it up two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whatever it was.
Could we have your address, please, sir?
Uh, one hundred West Beechnut.
Thank you.
The corner of, uh, Sioux and Beechnut.
Okay.
And so, um, I literally moved my landscape rock from the west to the east side, continued the landscape rock from my backyard, curved it up to the corner of the, of the driveway. Rocks are hard. It's a hard surface. I have my trailer on there. It's quite sizable. And I would like to, at some point, move my fence to the back of my garage, back my trailer further off of the street, so it's not such an eyesore, if you will. But I don't want to put in fifty thousand dollars worth of concrete or thirty thousand dollars worth of pavers when rocks are hard. And if they're good enough for landscaping in the front of the, of the house, why would I not be able to park on something that looks like it's supposed to be there?
So just to, uh, clarify, you're not, you're not talking about gravel. You're talking about landscaping. You, I think you already said this. It's kind of the same as what you have surrounding the house.
Correct, yes.
That's what this, your example is.
Yes. A hundred or less than a hundred yards across the street is the old base manufacturing facility. They have an entire lot full of gravel with trailers parked on it. That's gravel, pea gravel.
I would say that that parking lot is the prime example why we don't want gravel as hard surfacing. A lot of that gravel ends up in the curb line and in our storm sewer and we have a bigger issue there, so.
That was my comment. There's a, there's a difference between rock, a big difference between rock and gravel. Like you say, we, we run into, um, erosion control measures and whatnot with, with gravel. And so that's, there's, there's kind of a fine line. When does, when does rock become gravel? In your, in your case, you know, you might have, you know, inch and a half to three-inch rock, which is completely different than.
Right.
A gravel situation. So I, I don't want to just lump rock and gravel altogether because they're completely different. Agreed. Issues. Gravel's a step up above mud, so.
Correct.
Are there concerns with, and I know that this can happen in landscaping too, so I understand where you're coming from, but I'm just, would there be concerns with weeds in rock, more weeds in rock than there would be in concrete or asphalt? Is that part of our concern?
It, it could, could occur, yes.
I know a long time ago, we talked a lot about, um, this, this subject. And I remember talking about how important it was to have a, what's permeable, some, it was a long, do you remember, Tammy, we were talking about, um, equal friendly surfaces?
Yes, we were talking about zero scape.
Yes.
So when we say pervious pavement or something like that, um, and what we would actually allow in a boulevard. So when we start talking about drainage, we do consider packed gravel as a hard surface because it doesn't allow that water to really infiltrate. And we don't want people to be putting gravel in their boulevards.
Okay.
So that's where those two are different. Hard surface is definitely defined differently in our drainage code than when it isn't hard, so the ordinance is.
Because we, we talked too about when we have like poured concrete or something, is that going to affect the drainage negatively? So, and I know this, uh, it calls, it, it, our ordinance here says pavers are okay, all right, so they let the water through. Do rocks let the rotter, water through? Not gravel, but rocks.
Probably depends on how they're installed and what's underneath them, but yeah, potentially, there's some really nice applications. And I looked at them for a project that's not in Brandon. Something we were looking at doing is, there's some really nice applications of, you can get these kind of like a grid that you can put down and then kind of fill it with rock, so it kind of helps with erosion control and it helps it stay. And, and I pulled up pictures, like there's some really nice driveways made out of stuff like that, but again, it's all, like others have said, I wouldn't be
Yeah.
in favor of gravel being allowed for.
If you put a whole bunch of plastic underneath the rocks, you, it's just like having what, an impermeable, impermable, permeable, impermeable surface. Um, when I think of rocks, like you're talking about, sometimes what I, what I think of is, okay, there's rocks and then they get moved over, they get pushed over and pretty soon they're over here and, but if they would be contained in some kind of, with a border around it, that might be better.
I do have the plastic black border, again, continuing from the backyard to the, to the, to the sidewalk.
Something to contain it so the rocks don't just.
Yes.
Just some point of reference as you work through it. So we require a lot of parking lots and drive areas and everything to be hard surface. So conceptually, a change in definition broadly without more precise application would allow Jersey mikes to have a rock drive or houses to have rock drives. Where it becomes tricky on a staff standpoint is where do you draw the line between rock and gravel? Is Paul out there measuring the average size of the rock? And if, if that's what you wish, we could certainly put it in the legwork to figure out the line. But that's, that's just kind of staff's considerations on the broader scale.
Well, my concern is, it's something that can be done right, but it can be done so wrong. And that's, that's my biggest pull-up with making a change is that if you don't do it right and then all of a sudden you get ruts in it, three-inch rock is not easy to level out. And so I'm not, I'm just thinking of the negative. And that's, I'm a positive person, so it's hard for me, but that's the hardest part about this is that you always have to look at what's the, what's the downside? And leveling out, I mean, I grew up in the country and I've been up and down a lot of maintenance roads and leveling out rock is very hard, so.
It was not fun moving it, not gonna lie.
But if it's, you know, if it's done, done right, to your point, well, if it's done right, can we do it? To my point, if it's done wrong, then all of a sudden we've got problems. So that's the, that's my biggest concern with making a change to that is how, how the bad side is. Is the, is the good outweigh the bad or is the bad outweigh the good? It's kind of the. Yeah, I was, I was, right before you mentioned that, I was going to say about, basically about the same thing, how you install rock. It's not, you know, are you talking four inches of rock and is it inch and a half to three-inch size or is it, you know, um, and how often you drive over it. It will, it will be a continual maintenance issue. You know, I'm not saying what you did was, was right or wrong, but it really comes down to how, then how do we, how do we regulate the correct installation of rock? You know, the size of the rock, how much rock there is. And any rock, if you drive over it long enough, it's going to rut. The mud is going to come up through it. Yeah, it, it becomes a, a maintenance issue. I mean, even, even in construction zones, we have what's called tracking stations where they put rock down to, to keep mud off of streets, but within a couple of months, they have to go in and replace that rock because it, it fills up with mud. The mud works its way up, up through the rocks over time, so. It, I'm, I'm nervous about allowing it because it becomes, uh, how do we monitor, you know, make people maintain it, um, once it's installed?
It occurs to me too, that, you know, we have to try to think of every situation, you know, not just one or a handful, but every situation. It occurs to me too that we could end up with people just parking on rock, parking on their landscape. And, and we say, oh, you can't, can't, oh, but, oh, but that's, that's my, that's my new pad, you know? Well, it was your landscape, but it's my parking pad now. We might get people parking in places they're not supposed to park. I, um, you know how in parking lots, they'll have curb and then they'll have rock, you know? Where you turn in a parking lot, they'll have, uh, the curb will go around and then they'll have rock there. And there's always some rocks on the street. I don't know how they get there. Because are people walking on that rock when they walk across a parking lot or? There's a friend of mine lives in a, uh, apartment complex and when you go up to the main building, there's landscaping in the corners, so the sidewalks here and then you go up to the front door. And then there's in the corners, there's rock. And there's always rock on the sidewalk. I always kick it back in, always. In parking lots, I do that. I put it back where it belongs. But how does it get out of there? I, I can't figure that out. Well, so, so I, that's, it's highly possible that was not helpful at all. But I, but I thought I'd say it. I thought I'd say it in case, in case it makes a difference in any way.
So are we saying that based on our, um, definitions right now, what he would like to try to accomplish is not able to work? Is that what I'm hearing? I wasn't here at the last meeting. So we would have to change something to make that work? Okay. All right, so what did we do? Was it just discussion last time?
No, public.
Public, oh, public comment?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So now we're on the agenda. Okay, thank you, okay.
Basically, there was a, a, a formal complaint and I wrote the other letter stating that what his trailer, you know, did not meet the zoning regulations. And then he's called me back and wanted to banter back and forth about what his interpretation was in rock and gravel. But as it stood now, you know, we have to hold firm unless we have an ordinance change or a remittance to the definition that it then allows us.
I guess what do we, what do we need? Do we need a motion to either not take action on this or a motion to? It's only discussion, so we can't, we can't, uh, take any action. It's just a discussion item, but I don't know. I haven't heard anything that's really in favor of making a change. I think for me, the concerns of making a change outweigh the benefits. I, I'm not opposed to having something brought to me that would change my mind, but right now I, I don't see a reason to make a change. I'm, I'm in agreement. I think we'd be opening up possible headaches.
Unfortunately, these things are always very difficult. What seems to make total sense to the homeowner and often to us is against the rules. And so this board has to stand pretty firm, as Alyssa said, otherwise, um, everything blows up. So I don't know if there's anything that you can work out with Paul to make it work at this point. I don't see a, a push here to change the rules.
Is there a particular size on the pavers? Is that stated? No?
They just have to be, you know, usually they're one by one, two by twos, but they're, they're connected, you know, as tight as you can. And they go the full length and width of, of the trailer, the boat. It's not just on the wheels and the tongue. It's the whole width and length of the trailer, maybe as tight as they can. So there would be, you know, the advantages for weeds to grow up, but it still could be weeds.
So, because I, I've seen them do, um, maybe twelve by twelves, but there's grass growing up in between and they'll do two or three paths.
Instead of this, it's for the, instead of having a poor concrete pad, would be the pavers would make that pad as if it was poured pad.
Right.
Sorry to disappoint you. Appreciate your coming in. Um, anything else on that? Okay, um, application of minimum parking requirements, number forty-four. Was there someone here that wanted to talk to that?
Yep. So we do have, so right now, kind of the way this works and maybe it's been applied differently in the past or inconsistently or whatever, but you know, as you know, today is today and we deal with what we have today. So we have, strip malls is usually where this comes up, but usually when someone builds a strip mall, the future tenants aren't always known. So staff looks at the building and we try to find some way to determine minimum parking standards without knowing precisely what will go in. Right now, our interpretation is you have to draw the line somewhere. We have multiple uses, so there's something that distinguishes retail from a eating and drinking establishment in a blank space. So conceptually, there's something we have to settle on. And what we have as staff is a drive-through window. Makes it, even though it could be a bank, it could be a pharmacy, in a strip mall, especially in End Cap, a drive-through window, at least from a staff perspective, long-term makes it potentially more likely an eating and drinking establishment would go there. So that's where we assign that number. And looking back through my email when we were working on the, the strip mall down in Brandon ninety Plaza, they, they removed a drive-through window from the far end because of that interpretation to meet their requirements. So staff's preferences, we set the requirement and unless some kind of remodel is done, that would change that. Say they added the drive-through window back, that would change the calculation. They have to come up to standard. The problem is, say, nothing changes, it's hard for us to, when something goes in and out, potentially these spaces change over six months, a year, things come and go. Things come and go. Do we want to look at it each time? And at a city level, tell a business potentially, no, you can't come in. Because you don't meet the parking or require them to purchase more land if it exists to add more parking? Or where do you prefer we make this determination? Staff's preferences, we get out in front of it at the start. And if something changed, something changes and we redo it. But if it's just a tenant moving in and out, we wouldn't necessarily look at it again. But we are interested in your thoughts. The city of Sioux Falls, instead of our retail standard is one per three hundred. Our eating and drinking establishment is one per a hundred, or there's a calculation based on the number of seats. Sioux Falls has taken the approach that strip malls tend to be more frequent in turnover than other buildings. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but they kind of slice it down the middle and have a one per two hundred for strip malls. To try, to get out in front of this as well. And I have spoken with them and that's how they would make a similar interpretation. We're just looking for how you all would like us to apply it. We have a situation out in Brandon ninety where we've calculated the number for the spot next to Jimmy John's. Since there's no drive-through window, it's just a blank space with the retail number. What's looking to go in there now would broadly categorize as an eating and drinking establishment. So if we were to apply that number now, they would not have enough spaces. So do we want to make them buy more land? Do we want to tell them, sorry, you can't go there? Or do we just want to, we made the determination and we'll stick with it unless you substantially alter the building? It's kind of what we're looking for from a staff perspective.
Why don't you go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and just tell us what's going on?
My name is Leroy Askam, the vice president of, of construction. Uh, this is thirteen thirteen through thirteen twenty-one East Ash Place. This is the Jimmy John's building. We're, we're currently, I'm speaking on, on behalf of the owners. Um, so we're, we're, we're at a spot where again, if we built out the remaining Jimmy John's space, we would have adequate parking, uh, for retail only because it's that one per three hundred, uh, parking spot. Again, as Patrick mentioned, if we, we look at any other tenant, like another restaurant, our, our parking capability just isn't there on that particular lot. We, we looked at, and I, I worked with Paul trying to come up with, with some, some options, you know, parking on the street. Oh, that's not allowed. You know, maybe getting a variance, uh, for that twenty-foot offset in the south possibly could, could maybe be another option. We, we did look at, you know, the option of buying adjacent land, uh, to the east side, you know, as, as an option. Uh, we did also talk about a, uh, possibility of there kind of being co-op parking or cooperative parking, uh, community parking. They do that at Dolly Farms, Sanford Health, the Empire Mall. They have all of this kind of parking. And since we're kind of the first person that would be considering that, again, we're one of the first tenants out there. I don't know how that works with the city saying, is everybody in the development, uh, look at a cooperative parking type situation? It's not, I'm not sure how that would be implemented. Uh, but yeah, we're, we're trying to figure out if there's any options for us, uh, and limitations as we talk to different tenants. We want to get you, um, want to get you another eating establishment in Brandon if possible. But again, it's limited by, by what we can do. Another thing I want to bring up too is Jimmy John's is a typical sit-down restaurant. It is more of a fast food, um, get it, get out, get quick. So restaurant to me, it's like a high-frequency restaurant. It's not like a sit-down Gruff or Tailgater or something like that to me. I didn't know if anybody would feel different or want to talk about that option. And we, Su- city of Sioux Falls has this too. This is, uh, this is thing number two, uh, bike racks. I know there's no current, um, opportunity to have a bike rack or two out there and it count as a parking stall. But when things get tight, uh, throwing a bike rack out there may help, you know, your, your future, uh, parking lots come into that correct number. So, um, I, I just want to hear your, your thoughts as far as community parking. Um, and kind of give us a, a framework to see what we can do and answer any questions you guys have.
So some past commentary. So when we were looking at the strip mall lot where Domino's and future Jersey Mikeses and scooters, and we were looking at the lot next to them as well that was for sale. We had talked about the shared parking rules that we have adopted. Whether a retail store, it, it goes by trying to offset peak operating hours. The ideal situation would be a daycare and a church. The daycare would operate during the week, the church would operate on the weekend. It didn't make sense to make them add daycare plus church spots to have the hole in the lot when they'll never be used. So that's offsetting peak times. I want to say the board looked at general retail operating hours versus restaurant operating hours and found there wasn't enough separation of peak operating times. So that's why shared parking conceptually applies. But in reality, I don't know if it would apply if they came to you with a conditional use permit. But, so that's a consideration as well as everything else Leroy mentioned, basically.
Um, a couple of comments here. So a new, a new parking criteria for strip malls is a double-edged sword. So instead of going one to three hundred and one to one hundred for retail and, and, uh, eating establishments and going to, and, and identifying them separately, going to one to two hundred. And we enforce that as a new standard. The ones that want to come in and put in retail, they're gonna come in and complain, geez, you're making us put in too much parking. So if we, we, if, if we start going down that road, we can't have our cake and eat it too. The, the eating establishment people, they're gonna love it. Because hey, we don't have to put in as much parking as we would if we put our restaurant in a freestanding building. We don't have to do one to one hundred, we can do one to two hundred. But the offset to that is the people that want to put in retail, they're like, you're making us put in twice as much parking as what we normally would have.
Does everybody know what the one to one hundred and one to three hundred means? I, again, it's one, one parking stall per one hundred square foot of the building and one parking stall per three hundred foot of the building, different things for different uses.
But I think we, if I remember correctly, when we were having that whole discussion, we didn't really want it to look like Dolly Farms that sits empty half of the time. And so we wanted to be cautious about not requiring too much also. I don't know where that puts us. I don't know if that's, but I think we did talk about that because Dolly Farms is half empty.
From a sales tax standpoint, I'm sure Barb would probably agree that rather than having large empty parking lots, we would prefer two or three more businesses generating sales tax from a broad city perspective.
How, with, with their calculations are here, how far off are they talking about being?
I'm a hundred and, I'm, I'm ten thousand four hundred and twenty square foot overall. Jimmy John's is fifteen hundred. So, uh, my potential, uh, tenant is twenty-six hundred again. So that's fifteen plus the twenty-six, uh, of occupied space and then the remaining, uh, you know, two tenants. So that's, that's kind of the, the potential of what we're looking at right now. Cause I, I don't want to build it out with restaurant, restaurant, and then don't have any parking for retail, retail. Or somehow get a coffee shop in the end and, you know. So we're, we're trying to go through those things too and, and see not only this, this fill, but what are we, what are we looking at for units number one and three?
And if, so if, if you have two food establishments, do you have room if it's two retail? Or that, just with the two?
Right, right now, as it reads, I would have Jimmy John's as my food establishment being the one, one to three hundred. Sorry, one to one hundred. Um, and the remaining, remaining space in there right now, I'd barely have enough to do retail in the rest of it, the way I calculated it.
That second restaurant's gonna put in max. And then he, like the gentleman said, you would not have any room for the third and fourth tenant.
And part of that came around when the calculation changed because they took the drive-through window out, right? Cause there was?
So with the drive-through window, if we defaulted to treating that as a default applying the one per a hundred, there would not have been enough parking spaces on the lot to meet the requirement, assuming two eating and drinking establishments and retail in the middle. So it was taken out to meet the parking requirement that exists now. So you're, they're right on the line with three retail and one eating and drinking establishment. Adding another eating and drinking establishment would probably exceed that number pretty handily.
Correct, correct. Why, why does a, why does adding a drive-through window automatically create a eating establishment? That confuses me.
So at a staff level, we have to find something to differentiate between the two. Otherwise, the standards wouldn't be different. It would all just be one per three hundred. There has to be some, something that divides the line.
But there's many, many, many instances, especially pizza places. You got Domino's, you got, um, what's the, what's the take and bake one?
Papa Murphy's.
Papa Murphy's, where you don't even have a table in there to eat at. It's, you're going and you're, it's no different than going and, and buying your meds at a drive-through pharmacy. You're, you're basically going and you're buying a product and taking it home. You're, they don't even have a place for you to sit there and consume it. So why does that all of a sudden putting us into a one to one hundred situation?
Is that like a capacity like Jimmy John's? Again, they're, they're a little bit different.
Jimmy John's has indoor seating.
They do have indoor seating, but it is a high-capacity drive-through.
No, I, I, I get that. It's, it's like a McDonald's. It's like a Hardee's. But I'm talking about places that the only seating they have is for you to sit and wait for your pizza to get made. Or waiting for your, your prescriptions to get filled. So to me, just because a, a, a business has a drive-through window, that does not constitute a eating establishment. I, I think our definite, we need to create a definition. If a certain percentage of your, of your area, whether it's maybe twenty-five percent, thirty-three percent, whatever that percentage of your floor area is and has sit-down seating, that to me would create an eating establishment.
The problem we run into as staff is we don't know. You have three units here that are vacant. So how do we calculate that number at the start? Is what we run into and eating and drinking establishment. So then we also struggle with that. But for the drive-through window, differentiating them at the start, what would is where we struggle? Cause otherwise, then we just calculate everything at one per three hundred. And then we run into the situation where do we want it to apply? Is it a situation where we need to expand the boxes of how we calculate? Maybe we differentiate between eating and drinking establishments if they are fast food versus sit-down versus we'll come up with something that accommodates Jimmy John's and Domino's was an issue too. Cause no one eats in Domino's. It's a drive-through. But should it require parking when nobody parks, they drive through? So that's what we're trying to work through. It, it's hard in application when we are presented with a blank and have to apply somehow both. Cause that's what we're given.
Hey, I, I, I see where you're coming from. And if that drive-through window would remain and that calculation would have been put in there, then we, they would have had to solve that problem earlier, right? And then that problem would be solved.
Correct.
Do we need to have a calculation? And I don't, I don't know, maybe Jimmy John's has enough vehicles there that we don't want to change that calculation for them. But they, I, and I haven't been in there, I apologize. But how, how much seating is in there? Cause I would imagine most of it is either to deliver your drive-through.
Jimmy John's, this is my memory going in there a few times. Probably five, six tables.
Just talking from experience being there, most of it's to go.
Yeah, and that's why it's, I'm just saying like that situation. And anymore, it seems like to me, these fast food establishments are building smaller, smaller buildings because no one stays. They all want it to go where DoorDash.
And so I was wondering if there needs to be a calculation with the food side for the amount of seating that's there too. Because certainly there's not as many people sitting at Jimmy John's as there is at the Gruff. I mean, it's a different environment. So that shouldn't be the same calculation, I don't think. Is that something that?
That's where we were when Domino's was gonna be in that other building that was proposed. I think that's where Domino's was coming from too, when they approached us that they were calling themselves, we're a bakery. We're not a food establishment really. We're baking and then getting rid of our product. I, I, I guess I would rather see us come up with a different, um, rather than classifying all eating establishments the same. We come up with a different classification. So if only, you know, less than a third of your square footage is allocated to seating, then, you know, why, why do we have to go one to one hundred? Then why wouldn't that one maybe go to one to two hundred? Versus a, a larger, like an El Tapatio or something where you got a lot of seating in a smaller kitchen, storage area. I think that would help with a lot of these fast food places that are stuck with the one to one hundred when, you know, over half of the areas is food storage and cooking. You might only have three employees in over half the building.
What type of, and you don't have to say what, what it is, but what type of establishment would this other one be? Would it be more of a?
Sit-down restaurant.
Brooks, did you have something?
Well, just, I was thinking at the beginning that a lot of good discussion here, but I, I'm trying to stick closer to what staff mentioned. Is that the hardest part about this? You can have all the calculations in the world, but in some of these cases, you don't know what's gonna go in there. So what would be? I don't know what would be. It's, it's a double-edged sword. Cause if you don't know what's gonna go in, hopefully, and I, I think with the things we have going on, we're gonna have more of this type of application coming up too. But it's also double-edged that if the staff doesn't know exactly what's gonna go in there at the building phase. And also it could change over time. It's, it's really interesting. So I'm not helping because then I also agree with what Barb says. It's like, you don't want to have sprawling giant parking lots that are taking up a lot of space that are gonna be half-empty. So I, I was hoping there'd be something simple, like the compromise between the square footages based on the applications. But I, I guess I can't say that I know that would be sufficient, but I don't know.
Well, do we have to know what would go in there? I mean?
In order to get a building permit, I'm sure I would.
But, so like, let's say, we'll use the example of the Gruff. If we have a, if we have a couple of retail stores in there, they're gonna be open during the day. The Gruff is gonna have their business at night. Again, it offsets. I, I don't think that Brandon is at the point where we're going to run out of parking in these parking lots. I just don't.
And to some extent, I think it goes on the businesses that are gonna be there. I mean, if I'm, there was a short period in my life when I did some of this work and we evaluated spots for opening businesses and, and we had to make sure it fit. And if we didn't, we'd have to look for another spot because there are things that could really jeopardize your business. So to some extent, I think it's gonna be find, I'd love to find something that's simpler and easier for staff to work with. And then to some extent, you're gonna have to count on the businesses to make sure that it's a, it's suited to their business. And it's not, if, if they're gonna build something that needed a lot of seating needed a lot of seating and sit-down, I think they'd have to recognize that. And I think they'd wanna recognize that and say, this isn't gonna work for us, because if it's a hassle for people to get parking and get into there, if it's a sit-down restaurant, that's gonna be a hindrance that they probably would deal with on their own.
So this, um, this one for Sioux Falls, they don't delineate between retail and restaurant. They just go the two hundred and just like average it out.
Correct.
In a strip mall.
They apply it when the strip mall is built and they do not look at it when tenants go in and out. So right now, we looked at it at the start and set a number. If we went with the rule that we do look at it every time a tenant goes in and out. I mean, Leroy could add his second eating and drinking establishment, but then when someone wants to fill the third or the fourth space at the city level, we'd be telling them, sorry, you have a vacant, empty building. You can't do anything with it, cause you don't have the parking.
So if we did go the one to two hundred, where does that, where does that leave them? Then they should be okay? I don't know how many spots you have there.
If I'm ten, is it fifty spots, forty-eight? I might be close, I'll be close.
But we'd also have to look at the eating establishments where you have one space for each three seats, whichever is greater. So we gotta play both those numbers when it comes to eating establishments.
Just talking out loud, like you said, if we went just to the one to two hundred, across like Sioux Falls and some strip malls, to get rid of the, the, yeah, the three-seat thing, we would just go to the strip mall.
Well, and because you have, Jimmy John's isn't gonna have the same impact as a sit-down for cars. So, I mean, things kinda even out, you know? And I understand the, you know, you have a tenant that comes in and they're retail before they had three hundred, now you have two hundred, but they're a tenant. Most likely, there's gonna be, the same owner's gonna own the building. And do you, as a retail, you probably wanna be somewhere that there's other stuff going on. So if there's food there, people are stopping to eat, that's kinda where you wanna be anyway. So you might give and take a little bit there. Anyway, yeah, I, I have to, I only get two hundred, or I, I have to have enough spots for, I don't get as many spots for retail as I did in the old, but you also have more people there, so I don't know. You get good and bad.
I think that reevaluating it all the time is, is too much. I, 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 I don't know why we, if we would come to an average, why we would need to do that.
Reevaluate right now because of our three tiers. This is why I guess reevaluate it, that would so be incorrect. And every time a building permit's issued, if there was a, if this was built and built out and then someone else came in to rebuild it out, they'd have to come in for a permit and that's when you relook at the marketing, correct?
Unless another restaurant just came in and took everything.
So that's why we're asking, when do you want us to look at this? Cause businesses come and go all the time. We generally look at the building rather than the use, the, the most likely use of the building rather than the particular use that goes in there. And we can further redefine that if we wanted to break down different types of restaurants and set the number that way, go with a two hundred number. Right now, it's a little murky when we should look at that calculations. Should we just when it's built? Should we look at it when every tenant goes in as in what we're looking at now? It's, I think we've done different things over the course of time. We're just trying to find your consensus on how we should be doing it.
With, if we went to the two hundred with current strip malls in town, are there examples where the two hundred wouldn't work? Where it's, where it's too crowded, people aren't able to, to function? Is there, is there, and I know that's kinda throwing it out there, you can't answer that right now, but, but if we went with that, does it not work? I guess would be my question, cause it seems like it'd be a lot easier.
I would, I would venture to guess the majority of them will not have adequate parking. So then when someone goes in for a building permit and we recalculate it, we're gonna run into the same problem. Because typically when these are built, they wanna build these things as cheap as they can. And so they're, they're going to one to three hundred.
So you're saying that the buildings don't have enough parking space, not that there aren't enough parking spaces?
If we change our ordinance to one to two hundred instead of one to three hundred for a strip mall, I would, I would venture to guess that a lot of them will not be in compliance. So when someone comes in for a building permit and we do the calculation, we're gonna find out they're not gonna have one to two hundred. Because we're finding out right now when.
I know, but when did that rule get established?
What's that?
The one, one to two hundred, one to three hundred.
Well, we're, we're talking about, we're talking, we're talking about going to one to two hundred.
Oh, I know, but a lot of these strip malls that were built in Brandon were prior to a lot of these codes that were established.
Uh, these parking ordinances have been around for a long time.
Oh, I'm just, I'm talking, for example, like the Steakhouse, Brandon, Brandon Plaza.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of those buildings existed beforehand. And then they're probably maybe not even compliant now, who knows? I don't know, I mean, Steakhouse is a pretty big building.
We did look at Split Rock Square where Ace Hardware is, when they were working on their project and they were sixty or seventy off.
That was right on the cusp, but not working. I can tell you that right now. That was like right, they squeezed it as much as they could. And I don't, I, it's, it's close, I know that.
So to bring us back into when you want us to apply this. So it's built, there's parking. If you wanted us to apply it at the front end and not relook at it unless they would make an some kind of revision that would necessitate a relook, just tenants moving in and out would not. They would have to alter the structure itself pretty substantially. Leroy would be allowed to do what he wants to do because the look would have already been made. If we need to look at it every time, then he would not. Is there a preference?
I guess in my mind, if, if a restaurant is gonna be going in or out of a building, there's gonna be a building permit process. Now, if a retail tenant moves out and another retail tenant moves in, you probably don't need a building permit. But the usage is, isn't gonna change. So typically if the usage is gonna change, they're probably gonna have to come in and get some kind of building. Um, because they're changing electrical things or things like that. Wouldn't you agree, Paul?
Yes, I mean, actually the, the building code, the IBC requires when you have a change of group, occupancy group, you, you get a building permit. Um, when you're going from a B to an M, or that's an office versus a work and tell, you have to get one. If you're just going from a restaurant to restaurant, then you wouldn't necessarily have to get a building permit. But if there's not gonna be any substantial changes to it, if it's just cosmetic stuff, so it all depends.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is if, you know, Betty's Secondhand Store moves into a place that was previously owned by a, you know, another retail place, we don't care. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't fall in front of these guys for review. So I guess in my mind, if they come in for a building permit, at that time, it would get recalculated and reevaluated. And that's, and that's typical for any building. You know, you, it doesn't necessarily have to be a strip mall. It could be, it could be any other type of building that the usage changed. And the same situation would happen. I mean, we're, we're, we're currently talking about strip malls with multiple tenants, but this could be any kind of building that could change from an office to retail, from retail to, um, eating establishment, to, even, you know, um, to an assembly. We have churches now in strip malls. And that's, that's a different, another type of occupancy with, with a different load calculation.
Well, if you had a freestanding business and you went from retail to manufacturing, you would have, then the zoning would, I mean, it would obviously get picked up at the office somehow through that, through that way. Would that work, would that work for you, gentlemen?
So that's kind of how we currently mostly have been doing it. If the, the use would change like that, and that's where it presents a problem for them, cause they've designed the space as a retail with a retail number. Changing it to a restaurant with a restaurant number throws everything off.
So like, like the Brandon Retail Center where Sassy Nails is and the coffee shop, those tenants have come and gone and we have not recalculated every single time. Cause the, the, the uses are probably somewhat similar. And then also to tag onto what Brooke said, we, we've talked to, um, uh, other potential businesses that come into, to Brandon. And I think in the labor may be able to speak on this as well, where the, the owner or of, of the, the tenant space or the owner of the shop is gonna wanna have adequate space for their own and they, they will may have more than what the city requires because they, they have that need and they don't wanna have a full parking lot and have people drive up and go, fool, I'm going to the next establishment. So they wanna take care of that, that situation. So this potential, uh, restaurant, I'm sure you want to have adequate space, you know?
Correct, correct. So now it's, it's, it's kind of a, and again, if you told me you'd have to build it out for a restaurant, you know, instead of retail, when we started, it's a much different parking lot than we have right now too. So I, I don't know how you would, I think you've been doing a good job trying to be reasonable in how you establish the, uh, parking lots to begin with. Again, still curious about how the community parking, co-op parking, what that looks like? Cause it, it has been adopted by the city of Brandon, but just hasn't been really implemented yet. And get some clarity around what that looks like? Cause again, if it's restaurants at night and Sassy Nails Part Two, uh, during the day, is that the community parking in which we're kinda talking about is kinda shared on the same lot parking? Is that in turn what your thoughts are?
So the way the shared parking works, it requires that planning and zoning commission through a conditional use permit determines that there are, the uses on the lot, there is some, there is no substantial conflict or overlap between the hours. So the church and the daycare or something like that. That, that way they can essentially knock out one of the uses, so you don't have to add them together. You can just say the one requiring the most control for both, cause it's not used concurrently. The problem is planning and zoning has previously, when we were dealing with the Domino's lot, determined that some retail operations don't necessarily have, they, there may be some conflict or overlap there. So that, that would be your hurdle to overcome. You would have to make the case to them that your retail wouldn't operate at the same time as your restaurant, or there's not peak usage times that align or something to make it. So it's, doesn't create a problem when, if, you know, everyone shows up there all at once.
Sure, sure.
I think the, I think the, uh, middle school and the church is set up that way.
Makes sense.
The Lutheran church.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I know the Fasinal, the church in the Fasinal building, that, that one I know came in when the church moved into that, into that strip mall. I don't know about the other Lutheran church in the strip mall out at the Bluffs. If that one also follows that, that those are some examples of it.
So that would be a conditional use permit that would, that we would submit on. And, and basically, uh, let's just say we go Jimmy John's and, and, and eating establishment, a- and we have enough parking for right now. And I come back to you six months from now or a year from now and tenants one and three and say it's, it's a church or it's a daycare or Sassy Nails, and I can show you that they don't really substantially overlap, uh, with a conditional use permit. Then I would be allowed to basically exist in the same lot with, with what I have.
That would be up to these guys.
Then again, I guess that was a question.
That'd be the type of thing we'd look for, depending on the circumstances and details, but that's the type of thing I would look for.
So where does an office come in? Like if I had an office in that mall, what, what number would I need?
So I don't.
The three hundred?
I believe so. I don't think we call out office separately, so it would likely default to the one for three. Are, it's, so trying to summarize our takeaway, so we can give Leroy some direction. It sounds like your opinion is that anytime the use type of the business changes, you would like us to look at the parking standard as well. So that would then a food establishment going into that unit would throw off Leroy's calculation. So he would need to get the conditional use permit for the shared parking. Otherwise, unless he'd be willing to buy more land or somehow reconfigure things to construct more spaces, we're in a situation where they can't go in there.
And I guess the other thing that I guess maybe we should consider is though, the amount of space for a, a restaurant that has limited inside seating. So that would be none, or, or none, I mean, right. Domino's has zero, there's, and the, you know, Jimmy John's has maybe fifteen, twenty spots, whatever. You know, so I think that, that's something that we could, could consider too, that would change that.
So that would be an amendment to this, this table if we wanted to dig into that. How quickly are you looking to move those, the prop? Cause that change would take sixty to ninety days.
Okay, okay. I've got a tenant that, uh, I'm going to give pricing to in the next week or two. If they say yes, letter of intent gets signed, I could be at Paul's doorstep within a month or two saying, I'd like a building permit. And going down one way, buying land, as, as again, one of the options that, that would solve everything uh, for, except the cost of it, of course. Um, or, or going down the, uh, conditional use permit, uh, road. Again, they might have to stipulate some things to me, uh, before I would get my permit. So it's, I'm, I'm ready to go right away, uh, but it, it seems like it's a little bit off. And again, if I decided to put parking lot or show parking lot, I, I wouldn't be able to do it until spring now anyway. So there would have to be, and it, it'd take me six months to probably get it built anyway, but just trying to get that building permit in front of Paul to see, uh, what it could be. And if, if this tenant doesn't work, we, we move on to the next one.
And I guess, that's where a little bit of business risk comes in. You, you know, if you have a tenant that's available, we're tough, you know, you, you've been here for the conversation, you know, the challenges that we have and what we're trying to do. So, you know, you have to make that, that business risk. If you run out of parking for the other two, there might be some options, but
There may not.
There might not be, so, you know, so that's kinda.
Um, as long as I'm here, would parking south of here in that twenty-foot setback, uh, sorry, it would be, yeah, south of there, butting the fence if I filled that in uh, for additional parking spots? That would be a variance situation or a conditional use permit situation?
On a strip mall lot is five feet, but you will butt a residential, so that extends that to twenty.
Correct.
So then we'll go over to the ostrich parking rules in the rear yard for general business. Parking spaces are allowed so long as they are not within the setback. So if you wanted to have parking spaces in that setback, twenty-feet setback area, you would need a variance from the Board of Adjustment.
And that, I'm not asking the likelihood of that, that, but how long does that take? In a month decision?
So a, a variance is a, an application that goes to planning and zoning. It doesn't require two readings or anything like that with, you know, two public hearings and readings on, in adoption phase. It is something that they issue at the time, or I guess there is appeals to the city council and stuff, and we'll talk about that next, if they're so willing. But, so that takes probably anywhere. But, so that takes probably anywhere between a month and forty-five days, depending on how the calendar falls.
Good, sounds good.
Can I make a recommendation that we put on our future agenda to. Address eating and drinking establishments?
We will have a starting point on the next agenda.
I guess, I'm, I'll throw it out there. Um, I think we should have a definition of high-density eating and drinking establishments. And low-density eating and drinking establishments. How do, how do we differentiate between the two? Is it, in my mind, if, if an establishment has less than one-third of its. Floor area dedicated to seating, that's a low-density eating establishment. If it has more than a third of its floor area to seek to sit-down eating, that would fall under high-density. Which would be the one to, one to one hundred, and then the low-density, we could have one to one hundred, one to two hundred, whatever, wherever we think it is. But there, there definitely is a trend towards these different types of fast food places with. Very limited indoor seating. And then if there's no indoor seating, it is, to me, it is not a eating and drinking establishment. If it's a take-and-bake pizza place, if it's a, a donut shop where you just come and grab your food and leave. That to me should not fall under either of those situations. That to me is, is just retail.
Thank you for your patience, appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, moving on to. All the definitions. Do you have any appetite to go through those?
We are at eight o'clock, so I will leave that up to you, whether you wanna talk about that or if we wanna move on.
Did anybody see anything that they wanted to discuss, or do you wanna put it on the next time agenda? Or are we just delaying the inevitable? You got a baby at home. All right, let's move, we'll put that on for next time. What about the?